Okay. See the red light, that's usually a good thing. Everybody's in their seats. Alright, good evening everyone. Welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. First order of business on tonight's agenda is the minutes from our February 1st meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Um, who took it up?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second?
Motion's been made in second, do we have any discussion?
Okay. So, we were just to, um, just to enhance something and talk about, talking about how great the finance night was. And it was a conversation about, it was one other type, whether it was about where he's going, or, um, you know, high school or something like that, we were talking about.
Right.
That we agreed to do one of those two, and I just wanted to point them here that that was one of the pieces that we might just like to pursue, whether or not we want to have that. And I know the great comment was that we're gonna do this again if we're here.
I withdraw my motion, remotion to accept the minutes as amendment with the fair request of question.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, you need further discussion? All okay. Motion passes forward here. It was a very nice piece of media policy there, a lot of withdrawal and, yeah.
My best.
That was very stunning.
And you were doing other things at the same time, like shuffling paper.
I know. I'm looking at all of you right now. Alright, next order of business on the agenda is chairperson's report. And in all seriousness, I do want to just call attention to the sad events of the day, sort of afternoon in South Florida. As a public school, high school teacher, that resonates with me. And I do want to just send our thoughts and our positive energy to our, my colleagues in South Florida. And I also just want to tack on to that, that I have been in communication and conversation with Jen and Dr. Gerardi came to join us tonight, but also Charles Cooper-Hong, to just reiterate with the greater major community, the things that we are doing as major public schools to try and keep our children safe and secure when they're in our school buildings. Because I'm sure that there's probably a great deal of unease in our town right now. I didn't hear quite a lot about it, I did get one email to just follow up on the Alice receivers, and just saying, you know, "I'm really glad that we instituted Alice throughout all of our buildings." But I think it would be a really nice move on the part of the schools to just reiterate all that we are doing to try to keep everyone safe. And even project for what our plan is out for next year as far as training for areas, so. And, uh, following up, I'm in the process of meeting with Erin, good evening Erin, next week, to check in on the process and the grant procedure for pushing forward for solar panels on both high school buildings. Erin, that's your? Yeah, so Erin's been in direct contact with a number of individuals and organizations. There's a clear path forward, including some grant money for design and planning. So I'm gonna meet with Erin possibly next Wednesday, although I haven't responded to Erin yet. Wednesday afternoon actually, next Monday. I'll get back to you on time. And I'm really excited about that, because since the building was open, the building is wired for plug and play as far as solar panels are concerned. And I would really like to explore those cost savings. And also continue with the idea of the community and doing everything we can to live in our impact in our footprint. So, um, that's what I have for chairperson's report. Jen, good evening, what do you have for superintendent's report?
Uh, so Dr. Gerardi presents his, um, sadness in not being here. He is at the National American Association of School Administrators Conference as part of his role on the Massachusetts Association of School Administrators Executive Board. So he's there, it's his role in that. He has been in communication around a lot of variety of issues, and he is in that communication expressing to us all of the ideas and things that we can back in terms of work that we can be doing. We're very excited about it. So, um, so I have a few things, both from Dr. Gerardi and myself. First, I'd like to thank Don Kelleker for attending me at probable player's performance at the college sport this week. The message for all of our students was about substance abuse and the use of theater, and the depth skills of the educated performers of an amazing impact on the students and adults in the room. There were times when you could hear a pin drop in the audience, and other times when they were laughed during tears. Our amazing students behaved impetuously, even with a topic that can be difficult, and asked very appropriate questions, and everyone are together. So thank you to probable players, to Don, and to Principal Siler, for all the praise he gave. As many of you know, we may be transitioning, or we are transitioning, our student information system away from IHAS into a new program called I Vision, I'm sorry, it is Tyler SIS. I keep saying the wrong thing. It is Tyler SIS, which seamlessly integrates with our financial system and allows for greater access and ease of use for all users. So parents, students, and teachers will be able to do a whole lot more, a whole lot more facility than we currently can do with IHAS. So we're very excited about that. We are working to transition all of our current data, and I would like to express sincere thanks to Judy Digges and Colleen O'Drady for leading this transition. They have done an incredible amount of work with Tyler. Tyler has been incredibly responsive to us, and certainly Judy and certainly Colleen have spent a significant amount of time in this transition. I would also like to thank the immersion teachers for taking advantage of this transition and meeting with me to add additional standards that will help parents in the immersion program better understand their child's ability to use this language, language in academic settings. So because we are making this transition, we have an opportunity to add those standards which folks have been asking for. The immersion teachers very kindly volunteer their time to identify what they should be, so I'd like to express things to them. We will be providing additional training for staff over the course of the spring. Training our, some of our teacher leaders who volunteered for these positions to be state leader leaders in the buildings next year, receive some additional training over the summer, and we're just very excited about the features that this program brings to us. Dr. Gerardi and I met with Diane Hunter from HIQ, an organization that promotes the use of an assessment mechanism to help students track their skills and ideation and imagination to new goals. Essentially powering, helping students to learn to be creative. For the superintendent's report, you can see the study NIH study by Rex Jung, clinical professor of neuroscience at the University of New Mexico that illustrates the brain science behind this assessment. There was a lot of stuff different that I don't understand how they figured out, but it does, but they've lit up in certain areas. But what is, I think, very telling is the work that they've done with students in schools, where they essentially are asking students to think about their ideas, think about how they are going to make those ideas a reality, and then tracking them. So I think it's a very important piece for us to be looking at as we are to make a better combination of our students. We will be partnering with HIQ to pilot this assessment with a few courses next year where it is most applicable. We are looking at some of the advisory roles in middle school and high school level, looking at some high school freshmen where they are exploring their senior projects, ideas we got from their captain from there, and then also using it in the fall for senior projects as well. Just the idea of thinking about their thinking around the creative process, we think would be helpful. And then after that, how that will get feedback from our teachers if we turn it back.
Thanks, yes. Can you just give an example of how to use and what specifically?
So, yeah, we can post a link to this as well, but essentially what it is, is the students take a survey online. The survey, they take four consecutive surveys over the span of, I think, six to eight weeks. And all of the questions are locked, or the answers are locked after that. And then at the end of that time, they get their results back that essentially show how their thinking has changed. And the survey progresses from, you know, what are the things you're interested in, what to be doing, to how do you make those things a reality, all the way through the four different steps in the sequence. And what they've shown is that it helps to improve people's, not just students, but people's ability to take an idea and make it come to fruition. So it's a pretty cool bit of brain science, certainly something that we want to be thinking about. We have been talking in education a lot about can you teach creativity? This seems to indicate that we, well, we may not be able to teach it, we can certainly get students to ask questions of themselves that will help them to learn and to get better at it. And I think it's, it's going to be really interesting to do, but it's with all things, we want to sort of see our goals. Yeah, so we're very excited.
It's like there's a time to add to the way they're getting, let them pass this now.
Yeah.
And as far as just really, you know, if we can start in the beginning, we're probably not.
Right. Right, exactly. Spoke to multiple people at the senior project interviews, and then also someone at our finance meeting, or finance board breakfast meeting, really just talking about what's not good for your children, you know, the degree that you have at how you're moving to solve problems. And that's what, that is the skill that our kids need to have. So we need to figure out a way that we can make sure they know, one, whether they have it or not, and two, how they can get better at it. So, we're excited about this project and we're, and right now it's free, which is always very free. So.
Free of equality all the time. If you have any questions for Jen from the superintendent's report? Alright, moving forward, we are heading to super representative's report. Good evening.
So, it's in Spain. She's not there yet, but she's on her way to Spain, so she's not here. So, it's Erin Egan, who's one of the younger ones, who hopefully will be coming to one of these meetings shortly, but we'll see. But yeah, I think, obviously the vacation's coming up. I think there's definitely some anticipation for that. I'll be headed to Virginia to go tour some colleges, that'll be interesting. Yeah, it'll be interesting. What else? Oh, and I'm actually sent, so I'm in senior student government, if you guys didn't know that, I'm a class representative. And we have a few ideas and changes that we would like to make to the graduation process. And I'm hoping to just get your opinions, your thoughts, and I mean eventually an approval or disapproval, obviously. And also I want to talk to you guys about the senior trips and get approval, disapproval as well. So, as traditionally has been done, this is like really exactly bothering me, but I'll try and get over it. The scholarships are usually given out at graduation. And if you guys have attended, which I know you all have, you know, that's a very timely process. And graduation, I mean, last year it can get up to three and a half hours, and we all think that that's not, we, our goal is to kind of make graduation shorter, sweeter, more interesting. So, we were hoping to move scholarship announcements to senior awards night. So that's our idea. And we understand that this is gonna make senior awards night a little longer, but I think that that has a different vibe, and people will be willing to sit through that, because they already have to sit through the senior awards, you know, than graduation. So that's our idea, yeah? Sure. Sure, yeah.
Who do you have, you know, certain schools maybe do it that way in the brochure? That everybody gets the scholarships, and who are the recipients are listed in that?
Yeah.
And who's certain scholarship sponsors can get recognized?
Right.
Maybe over three years down, and maybe those students should.
Yeah, of course.
So as long as that's all, and maybe that could be part of the graduation brochure.
Yeah. Yeah, no, definitely. I will take that back, make that happen, no problem. Yeah, any other thoughts on that?
I've handed out the diplomas and chicken hands the last two years, and they agree that the awards are.
It's a little long.
Just waiting for them to take that idea from, from the idea to have. Have you spoken to Mr. Gerardi about this?
Well, no, not yet. That's our, we have a meeting with him, our whole student government does. Think next, when we get back from vacation, that like Tuesday. But Ms. Doctor, I've asked me to just run it by you guys tonight, because I was here.
It sounds, it sounds really good in theory, but the nice thing is, is we don't really have any oversight over the structure and organization of graduates. So, you know, starting with Principal Gerardi, that's would be a great place.
Alright.
No, we didn't have any concerns, so we could think that.
Okay.
So that way we doesn't send it back.
Yeah.
But let us know.
Okay, yeah. And then also senior trips. So we are planning to do the same ones that they typically do. We're doing the white water rafting in Massachusetts at a place called like Crab Apple, I don't know. We're going to Red Sox game and the senior cruise. Yeah, and we were really lucky, we saved up a lot, and we were able to completely subsidize the cost for this harbor cruise. Everyone's doing that for free. And we were able to make the other trips down to ten and fifteen dollars, which is really nice. Yeah. So, yeah. What? Yeah, all invited. No, we actually will.
I need to say, I teach high schools, I'm here every day.
Yeah, so we're excited about that. Yeah, we're really excited about that. We have, we're hoping with the extra money that we do have left over to do a scholarship in our name. But that's, we're hoping, so, yeah. Other than that, trying to think, there's a lot of stuff going on in the school right now. We have our psychology experience, experiments going on, which is so much fun. I can remember being a freshman and getting your class interrupted, you know, for the psychology experiment, and it's like the best thing ever, because you like get out of class for a little while, but it's like also so much fun. So yeah, we've been doing those, and also senior, yeah, the psychology experiments? Yeah, so basically we start off the term, we have second term psychology, and we started off by just taking notes and learning about really the whole process of conducting experiment, and really learning about each element of it, and how to analyze the data, and how to correctly conclude an experiment, and how to make a final conclusion about it, I guess. And then we split up into groups of two or three, and all of us made a proposal for our experiment. We had to make like a timeline of how we would carry it out, materials we would need, all that kind of thing. And then today, we actually did them, and it was really fun. We did, me and Garvey and Maddy Berry did one where we took groups of six students, and we sat three facing one wall and three facing the other. And we gave them a paper of like a hundred easy math problems. And we gave three of them like a timer right in front of their face that had two minutes, and then three of them with no timer, and we just said, alright, you have two minutes. And so we're gonna look to see if the people with a visible time restraint performed less great than the people without one. So that'll be interesting. Yeah. That's about all I can think of. Any questions on anything?
Well, I was wondering, were you even at the pop company that night?
No, I had a dance competition that night. I was sad, I was really sad, but.
So our family was there, who was there, just put on, just students. For anyone that doesn't know that, I want to mention, to mention, because it makes sense to mention, I'll give you.
Yeah.
And they, it was totally done by the students, it's like, it's like an open mic, but.
Yeah.
But it's just, it's just very, very cool, and they have a lot of performances, and WABM is important, the whole thing, and the music association just does like the, on the odds with the tables. They really don't do much of anything that's just real student run. And there's another one, they do another one this spring, right?
Yeah, something similar, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then, so anyways, people were really excited. They were, people were like, "It's so great to have people with younger kids here, and know all the cool things going on." So, we go to the Serdine Cafe for the open mic, it was like a lot of the same kids. So it was kind of fun to see them.
Yeah.
But it was really, really very impressive, and it was fun, and just something really, uh, they, that event to be able to see them put on. So I think I'll just mention.
Yeah. Sure, I will.
I have something I was gonna say, say until later, but now that Olivia's here. Nick Castro applied for a grant from the Education Foundation.
Oh, yeah.
For you guys, student government, I hope you're going there.
Oh, for the M.A.S.C. trip?
And we have some offers.
Yep.
So there's eight students that are going in the student government, and to learn different ways, learning, you know, their culture back to high school.
Yeah.
And what I like is that they're students now, and they're seniors. But I think we have representatives from the, from the S3 grades too.
Yeah.
At the high school. And one of the pieces that we did ask, and I think Ms. LaBelle is kind of following this, is again, it speaks to all the great things that are going on at the high school, or just in general. One of the pieces that we did ask is if you guys could figure out a way to go to middle school, and maybe it's from a part of a bigger assembly, to talk about how great student government is, and, you know, things that you guys do when that happens.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure. Yeah, I went to the conference last year, and it was amazing, it was so much fun. Unfortunately, because of play commitments, I just couldn't make it happen this year, but it's a great experience, I'm happy they're doing it again. Yeah. And just, I want to say also, I just want to thank you guys for all the help with the food drive. It's doing really, really well, way better than I expected. We have like boxes and boxes and boxes full of food, it's awesome. So, thank you guys for your help with that, I appreciate it. And, yeah. What? Oh, you know. Senior, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Where are you visiting?
Oh, I'm visiting James Madison University. Yeah, so that'll be fun.
He was on my shortlist, I grew up in Western Maryland, so James.
Oh, really? Thank you, yeah, I'm excited. Thank you guys. See ya after vacation.
Alright. Sorry, organizing my thoughts, making a note. Citizens comments? Anything on anyone's mind? Alright, moving on, Green Meadow Bridge Project update. Dawn, what have you got for us?
Um, I have, I heard of you back in the meeting I missed, that there was some questions raised about what's our plan, what form of Green Meadow, you know, with that, with the project, sort of out there as a lead, and also just thinking about the overall lifespan of building, and where is it on our future plans, with our capital plans. So Bob mentioned that to me, and then asked Justin and I, as chair, what's chair, one of us could be with Erin, both of us. And I was able to sort of fit in with Erin. I mean, I have great chat, and I know a lot more about Green Meadow, top of the list, what I don't know, now I don't know. So, but then Erin said you could join us tonight, so I'll really turn it over again. But other than that, I just want to report on my meeting, but I'll let you get over it if you'd like. I asked for a call.
I don't know, jack of all trades, master of none.
I got some.
Okay, so, well, does that go as much as that? Alright, yeah. So, Dawn and I met, we talked about, so it kind of sparked the conversations that every year the MSBA puts out two grant opportunities or programs. One of them is the Accelerator Program, and the second one's the Core Program. So the Accelerator Program is the program that this committee and this selectmen supported with a vote last year, and we applied for the Accelerator Program to repair the roof. So the Accelerator Program, you can only, there's three criteria that you can apply for. It's a roof replacement, boiler replacement, and doors and windows, and it's limited to just those three. So, when you're applying for one, you're saying that you're applying for one of those three, or one or all of those three in an otherwise sound building that meets the needs of the district. So this year, when it came up again, you know, there was some discussion, and that was part of the discussion that I had with Dawn, was what's the needs of the, of the school committee in the district? You know, I don't know the educational needs, I can only tell you what the needs of the facility itself is. And, you know, we have the capital plan, shared with, with the entire group and the administration. And in that plan, it shows that there's a lot of other needs than just a roof. Obviously, the roof is a critical component and one of the most expensive ones. And after last year, we didn't receive the opportunity to move forward with the Accelerator Repair Program. We ended up investing some money, which had been allocated at a couple town meetings ago. I think back in 2012, there's an account for Fowler and Green Meadow roofs. We dipped into that and made about twenty to thirty thousand dollars of repairs at Green Meadow in the summertime to get us through, and for the most part, everything's been holding. I know there's been some spot leaks here and there, but with an old roof, that's kind of to be expected, and we address them as, as they come up. So with discussion, last week with Dawn, and after, I had a lengthy discussion with Diane Sullivan, who's the head of the MSBA application, she explained to me a little bit more of the different programs, and what, you know, what would be a better fit. You know, my recommendation, if, you know, to the, to this committee is if you're gonna vote to support submitting a statement of interest, which is the first process, it would be to go towards the Core Program. The Core Program looks at the building as a whole, not just the facilities, but also the needs, the educational needs, classroom sizes, you know, what the future capacity of the school is if you anticipate being, you know, overcrowding, classroom sizes, et cetera. Does it meet, you know, what the, the environmental and the curriculum of, of, of the school is, you know, of the district is? Does that fit in with the existing building, or do you need other types of infrastructure, facilities to meet your educational needs? I don't have an answer to that question, that's up to you folks. So, but from a building need standpoint, what they'll do in the Core Program, that they don't do in the Accelerator Program, is they give you basically a facilities feasibility study. They'll send one of their experts in with their team, they'll look through at the entire building, look at all the structural needs, all the system needs, boilers, roofs, doors, windows, and everything, and basically provide what their recommendations are, a punch list of what everything would cost, and, you know, what would make sense and be the right fit for the district and the community as a whole. You know, does it make sense to do, you know, just repairs, renovations, or entire replacement? You know, that's a decision that, you know, that the, this, this committee and the community would need to make after seeing something that's more extensive. We had a feasibility study of all the buildings in town, back in 2011 it was done. So it is dated, we have made some repairs since then, but a lot of things still haven't been done. You know, we've identified some needs in the last couple of years. Obviously, the roof was a big one, you know, we do our Aera asbestos plan, we did our, our survey last year, identified, you know, all the, all those possible containing asbestos, which is, you know, areas in the school, in this building, in all schools in Massachusetts is a requirement for just school buildings, not other municipal facilities. So we have that plan, you know, it has an O1N plan, where you're supposed to work every year, trying to remediate more and more as funding becomes avail, available, it's very expensive. With the lead paint issue everyone knows about, we did some remediation, as much as we could in-house, and also some externally with a contractor, there's more to be done. And, you know, we have the doors and windows, single pane windows in the old areas, a lot of the doors, the doorways are starting to rot away, they're old doors. They need to be replaced, the newest thing's the boilers, and they're 2011 vintage, and they're still, you know, if you're building a new school building today, it's not the kind of boiler you would put in there, right? So that's to meet the existing system from 1988, 74, and 52 that's in the building. So, there are some needs, and like I said to Dawn, you know, we can continue to, is the building sound? Can we continue to use it as an educational facility? Yes, we can. Is it the level that, you know, the district wants? That's up to this group to decide, and I can support it, and however, however you want to move forward, we can keep fixing and fixing and get it through. Or if you don't want to bring it to the next level, that's up to, up to you folks. So, and I think that the MSBA Core Program will help identify that and help move, move this group in the decisions in the, in the right direction, give you the information you need to make those, make those educated decisions. So, the statement of interest, it doesn't commit the town or school district to anything financially. It's specifically that stated that the, the school district is interested in participating in this program and the next steps. It's very competitive. You know, I think it's in the range of sixty to eighty schools apply every year, and sixteen to fifteen, sixteen to twenty get picked every year. So, it's very competitive. The due date is October 6th, excuse me, October, April 6th. That's something that, you know, I could work on from a facility standpoint, there's things that I'm gonna need from administration, office, classroom sizes, capacity, future plans, curriculum, all that kind of stuff. I think together we could, you know, put together a pretty solid application to the program and try to get it in. If that's something that you folks would like to move forward with, it would just need a vote, and then we can work on that. And then, if you support it tonight, move it forward, I'll attend the selectman meeting, probably two weeks from next Tuesday, give a similar presentation I'm giving right now. And maybe if somebody from this group wanted to be in the room, support it, and we can get them to sign off on a, on a vote, and we'll get it done. And, yeah, like I said, last year we did, we did the same thing, we did the Accelerator Repair Program, and the selectmen heard the same message that you folks heard last year too, so.
They say when they change schools, I don't.
So, last year, so the Accelerator Repair Program, the deadline's this week for that program, and we heard, I believe in like late April, May range, so a couple months. So I would assume it would be a couple months, midsummer for the April, so maybe June, July range.
So with the poll line, do you have to reapply and then jump in, do we have to reapply every year?
Yes. Reapply every year.
Or it'll be the same information, right?
Same information, you might have more, you know, you might have another deficiency, or something else.
It's easier, I mean, if I work, it's easy now, and then just.
Absolutely. You know, I think, and you know, with the 129 Parker Street coming in, you know, you're gonna have another 187 apartments. There's gonna be more students, I'm sure you have that, and you're planning to, you know, of the, of the future growth of the students. So, I mean, that's something, that's something, that's a good piece of information that we, I would want to have when applying for this program, to show that, you know, we might not have a overcrowding need today, but we might in three years when those, when those open. So, that's some good info.
Today, they talked to you all about the idea of like, well, the building, the building was built for this date, then it's kind of like, why, we don't, don't bother with this grant, we know you're gonna need to redo that building in another couple years.
So, so this grant is the same grant that you would apply for if you were gonna completely, if you were gonna replace the building. So it's major repairs, renovations within the existing footprint, or a replacement. It's all the same, and they help you make that decision or provide some options and give you some guidance. So it's, it's. Absolutely.
Whatever we differ most from, from, right? The folks like, whether it's repair, or, you know, Erin's planning, you know.
Fifty-five. Fifty-five is the original, it's like the, um, it's the kindergarten wing, then the, yeah, yeah. And preschool's the inside of the corridor right there, or the courtyard, um, and then eighty-eight is from like the library, or the gymnasium, library, around up on the hill, back down to the, um, that back door, yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
Well, I have a statement of interest here ready for us if we decide to go in that direction, but as Aaron indicated, we do need a vote. So in that case, what I would like to do is I would like to read the statement of interest, and then I'll attend a motion, and then we'll take a vote. So this is addressed to the MSBA, and it says, "Resolved, have it convened in an open meeting on February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee planned, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated two seven twenty eighteen for the Green Meadows School located at Tiger Drive, Mayfair, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA in the future, including roofing issues, lead painting, single pane windows, deteriorating doorways, failing plumbing and fixtures, electrical and heat back restrictions, asbestos remediation. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of any grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, or regional school district providing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority." So if I have a motion.
So?
I have a motion, do I hear a second? Motion's been made a second, do I have any further discussion or questions? All right, all in favor? Motion passes for this area.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, absolutely.
Appreciate it. I'll sign this, and we'll get it along to you.
Thank you. So I, I wanted some more time to prepare the application before I went on Tuesday, so it's gonna be two weeks from, I think it'll be the first, this is the second meeting of the month, yes, it'll be the first meeting in March, I think the first Tuesday.
Sounds good.
Will do, absolutely. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so, I think so, so I'm gonna pass this down, I'm gonna hand this to Colin before I lose it. Dawn, your next step, um, I believe?
No, I think it's Jan.
Oh, communications is Jan.
Um, so last Thursday marked the first meeting of the communication task force. Uh, this group will use the six types of parent involvement developed by Professor Epstein as the frame for developing comprehensive communication plan. Uh, the group selected type two, communication as the first priority for this group. The group will be meeting monthly and expect to present an action plan to the school committee during the sev, June seventh school committee meeting. Um, I would like to express sincere thanks to teacher Jean Laval, who is co-sharing this committee with me. She was also the one who brought forward Epstein's frame, um, for organizing our work. And in the conversation that we had last week, um, it was, I think, eye-opening for parents to see all of the different ways that we need to address communication, uh, not just in terms of how we communicate out, how parents communicate with us, but ways that we really can create a homeschool partnership. Um, I think some folks were, um, a little overwhelmed by the, the scope of the work, um, and certainly, this is not something that we will be finishing by the end of the year, but we look forward to prioritizing the issues and providing with, uh, benchmark updates and, um, action plans as we move forward. So thank you to the, the volunteers and to Jean.
Did you get a return?
We did. Uh, a bunch of people were unable to attend. Um, it is challenging in terms of schedules. Um, you know, so we had probably, I think it was twelve or thirteen, uh, folks there with an additional five or so, so we're not able to be there. Jean Laval, uh, was again, the co-chair teacher representative, we have two additional teachers who unfortunately for schedules weren't able to make the meetings, uh, but are on the team and will be participating. Uh, and then obviously, will be bringing it to school councils and to faculty meetings and such as we move forward. Um, so our next step is really to prioritize what are the deliverables we want to tackle with communication? What order do we need to put them in, things like handbooks came up, sound communication plan and so on? Um, what order do we want to put them in so that we don't lose, um, the start of the next school year, um, and things of that nature? So it was a, a very productive meeting and really great conversations.
Now, that, on that, primary goal, it also includes, so we had the, you know, what do we call it? This is my student retention task force. Okay, formal chat. Here, one of the, one of the, the themes that came up was around, um, the transitions from elementary to middle.
Yep.
And I was just wondering if that kind of communication was.
Yes, that is one of the things, uh, you know, so there's a couple of different ways that this task force will work. One of them is to do very concrete, specific pieces like that. What does it mean to come into Green Meadow, what do you need to know, what does it mean going grade to grade? Uh, that one's a little bit more cumbersome just because they're small, nuanced details. Uh, but going building to building is certainly something that we're looking at, um, so we're sort of creating a parent handbook for each building. Uh, it's something which has come up before, I think your Fowler School Council has been working on some analysis of that. So those are some of the more concrete pieces we can tackle right away. Uh, and some of the more nebulous components that we will be tackling will be things like report cards, um, parent conferences, ways in which we can increase, uh, the effectiveness of homeschool and school communication. Those are things that are going to take much, much more time. Uh, this group, essentially, what they will be doing, they're not going to be revising the report cards, they're going to be developing a process by which, um, we will look at how reporters are providing information to families, what's useful. I had mentioned, I think, they're seeing a, a standing curriculum committee that I believe the Shova Regional has, where they essentially have a standing committee to look at this, um, every year. Um, so I want this group to go out and see what other communities are doing as well, and then make recommendations for what makes sense for Mayfair. But those are things that are gonna take much, much, much more time, and it'll help many more voices that, uh, that want to contribute.
And their friends, teachers, like, it is a process just to change the form.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely.
And you guys meet monthly?
We, we, we meet monthly. Uh, we also have, uh, thanks to our new technology director, uh, we have a subscription to Basecamp, which is a product management software. Um, and so, uh, I'm bad at it because I set the meetings up improperly. However, uh, thank you to Jen Lenachek for letting me know that. But, uh, what is nice about it is that it provides for nonlinear communication. We don't have to sit in a room to talk, we can do some work, uh, outside of those meetings. So, uh, we will have a variety of people who will be involved, both in the meetings, but then also doing the work outside and recording. And, uh, we're looking at those meetings being more, uh, working sessions for how we can move forward and to brainstorm, we hope to do the brainstorm offline or online as well.
So one of the objects that came out of the same conversation, um, was having to do, and, you know, more, um, teachers, but, um, it was when the students leave grade two, and they get to grade three, the grade three teacher doesn't necessarily know all the nuances, well, the students have been struggling in certain areas, or, or students that excel in certain areas, and that takes a process to that to differentiate the learning thing, but, so is that part of it to a whole?
So that was something that came up with the parents. Uh, we do do transition meetings every year, uh, between grade levels, uh, and, I don't know if you guys want to speak to the effectiveness or not. I do know we do that, uh, I think it's something that we can continue to look at. Uh, so those are, there are some things that I think will become recommendations for our internal team, um, to begin to look at sort of, it doesn't appear, um, to, there's concerns being raised about it, what could we do internally? Uh, but there are certain pieces that, um, you, and again, I think this is what the communication task force is structured to do. There's certain pieces that they will take on to create deliverables, and there's other things they will refer back to us as a leadership team, but I think that, it did come up, that was, the intention was to bring it back internally for us to do.
Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, sounds fantastic, Jen, I'm really happy that this is happening. Okay, moving on, um, item number eight, this will be your nineteen budget update from our budget subcommittee who won this year. Mary, you have the floor.
Mary Marshall did an amazing job with the presentation on Saturday, when we had the three committee annual meeting.
The budget summit, yes.
And, um, the, we had requested, um, level service budget of seven point two nine percent. Um, and it was Saturday, um, we were given five point one four percent, and we didn't say anything, or, um, very disappointing. It's not a, we're not, you know, really pushing. We were formally told that it would be closer than that, um, so I, I didn't say for myself, I was quite disappointed, um, that it did not come in at that. Because right now, we need level service plus in order to keep moving the system forward, but, um, we will continue with that. So it was a, you know, she did a really, really good, uh, history of what's the norm of education. One of the pieces was, um, just since two thousand and fourteen, the difference between our requests of, or these guys' requests of, uh, at the time of the level service versus what we received, and the aggregate negative impact that that's had over the years, to the two point two million dollars, um, we have today that we don't because, um, we, they received less than level service. So, um, so that's, that's where we are with this one.
Could you allow it to?
We could do a long talk, like, maybe today versus two thousand and fourteen, right?
And I hope you feel like the town overall, that everyone was good system, or communal feeling of everyone, so it was nice to have that.
I will say that, um, having the budget subcommittee meetings for the three, which represents a fine combination of selectmen and two of the, uh, school committee, has been very, very advantageous this year, it's been a really good, positive working relationship, so, um, so they, you know, we refer each other, which is great, because in the past, I guess, it was sort of you go to this meeting and be here, here all, um, so all along, we've been having conversations.
And I think it's fair to say, as you said, the real work begins. I think the budget is far from a permanent model at this point. There's a, there's a lot that can be done over the next few months, there's a lot of good conversations and working done, and, um, and it's up to us as the elected representatives that runs up the school to do the advocate, and hopefully we can move the deal a little bit.
Yeah, I have pursued the, um, PECOM finance committee, which I'm also a selectman, um, as far as we, we can find them and just, you know, reintroducing the needs.
Fantastic.
We should figure out, um, we should figure out deadlines, right? So last year, we had some discussions after the President's Law, so it means that we have a little bit harder, I think, a little bit harder for residents to adapt.
Yeah, right.
So I don't think we have deadlines for when?
April sixth is the deadline for, um, getting, uh, an article, I think, that you mentioned today, I believe she said, with people, so.
To get, uh, to the, to the town law?
Yeah.
So we have about seven weeks.
And for some reason, I thought I heard on Saturday, if I'm completely wrong, on March twenty-first deadline. So I could be wrong about that, but just making sure.
Um, March twenty-sixth is the, um, special town meeting.
Oh, so in the, um, in the Spanish update was, uh, Saturday, uh, page two of, uh, budget timeline, so March twentieth, FY nineteen budget document finalized and adopted by the E O S. So I'd say anything we do after that becomes, um, explanation, um, exercise at town meetings, maybe just either the way we get the deadline. So in, if, yeah, it says March twentieth.
Yeah.
FY nineteen budget document finalized and adopted by the E O S. So I'm not saying that there's not an April deadline, there's so many deadlines.
Yeah, so April sixth is to send you draft articles to the board of selectmen, but then in this email, she says, annual special town meeting is set for Monday, the twenty-first.
Yeah, so.
We have, we have a special. We have an annual, and then we have a special after that.
So that's, we wanted to create an article. So if we wanted to create an article that said.
Give us one.
Money for the public, so that's our deadline for our articles, but this is one there you will prove about this. So I think we should do this March twenty eighth for our back of the, the, for the boards. It really just shows you the timeline, sure, it's all good. So that's all.
Give us about five weeks. Okay. Mary, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, members' comments and questions. You have a bunch. Well, I'm gonna start at the end of the room, why don't you start us off, Dawn?
Um, first thing I want to say, especially since Anna and Nancy are here, um, Justin and I are representing on a donation settlement on the future contract for seventeen months, but it's happened. So Anna and Nancy.
Oh, we're counting.
Fifteen months.
So I, I, we're a week before, because we're all the same, um, it's all worked together, we, um, this, the two sides. Came to an agreement, and, you know, the next step is to take it back to the teachers, um, for a vote in March, but I'm hopeful that after seventeen months of very well working together, I just want to especially thank the two of you, a lot of people having had that much time and place with. Um, so thank you, and it was a long process, and I hope that we're all having the way we got to, and I think it's gonna help break Mayfair even a little bit higher than where we are, so we're very proud of you. Um, but I just want to make sure that we had a chance to thank you. So. I think I told most of you, but I was happy to be the end of the town administrative search committee, so I'm happy to be on that.
Thank you for being here.
It's always fun, it's nice to be home, and, yeah, I don't know before, it's, it's, I'm under, I'm under, so. We are starting to schedule, so Mary Marshall and I, in terms of being on the policy subcommittee, we are starting to set dates, or, or talk about getting a date together for quotes and conduct. So if you remember, when we talked about bullying, sort of discovered, there's bullying, and then there's sort of our expectations of students, so those are two very different things. And I know that, and I'm very respectful, that our two upper buildings have their own quotes and conduct, so I want to make sure that we say upfront that this is a partnership, this isn't, doesn't need to come top-down, and there will certainly be times where we want to invite that, but I think our first meeting is just to get together and see what do we have, what are some other restrictions we're dealing, and let's bring some folks in to talk. Um, so certainly not in the back room, but this is, you know, similar to some other things that we talked about. Um, so whether it's the district policy or community enhancement building policy, I think, everything is wide with it, but I think that there's a, there's a feeling that we really got. Um, so I know there's some excitement in terms of, um, when we met about retention of school choice. There's certainly some concerns, bad times about it either, and I think that this is disappointing. Another thing, we'll be at an ethical puzzle, um, so we're excited to get those meetings started. Uh, I had a good email from a president, uh, I know we've, over the past maybe year or two, we've had some questions about whether we're able to evaluate kids in Spanish burn with our front staff, or we need to staff up, you know, when I want to staff up, um, at the same times. Uh, so we got a great, um, email, the foretaker one, saying they had a really great experience with all the employees that had dysphoria, was able to evaluate, um, the child in English and Spanish, which is something we can hear, we could do. So it's just really great, and this is one of us, and I mentioned very well, I have a coworker, so I just want to sort of hold it in the bank or just report back that I think you are making some progress on, um, anything that might be missing there, while we're using student resources. So if there was stuff, if anything, that happened, um, it was nice to give him this letter, right? You mentioned that was an improbable player's performance, that was incredible. I, I can't imagine middle schoolers sitting still and paying attention, you guys had this different experience, I went to a major old, and they were amazing, you know, it was just, you can hear all these things, these things are amazing. You know, they're really dialed in, they ask such respectful questions at the end, and all the, um, performers are recovering, or former addicts themselves. So I just love, the whole thing is just right spot on, um, so that was just amazing, I'm really excited to be able to, um, spend some time doing that. Tussle with the new tech director, Stephen, um, because I'm a tech geek, I'm incredible, um, so I have to spend some time with him and see some of what I was working on in terms of website religions. Stephen is not really a simple wires guy, but he's also web savvy, social media savvy, so I think we're going to be able to really work with that. That's amazing, I appreciate that. Already able to roll into a lot of things, and, yeah, so, thank you for trying to, that worked for you. I appreciate your efforts.
He, he appreciates that I turn things over.
We have to, um, Steve is already hiring, I see. Yeah, it's about putting people, you know.
Absolutely.
So I'm really excited about Stephen, I think he gets up and running, so much of what we're all talking about, all of us, and trying to improve. We're, we've got a lot of resources in our arsenal, and it's just sort of getting that all on the board.
And I know if he cares a lot, he tied a little tech director under, but the reality is, is he's our tech department, so, like, it's, it's good that he's so well-versed.
And he's got the, um, techs in the schools that are helping with daily problems. And he's got the techs in the schools that are helping with daily problems. I think part of that is also helping faculty get used to all this new technology as well, because it's always changing. So just in your point, I had a lot of meetings that I just felt really positive about our direction, so I just want to share that. And in light of my new positive attitude today. Jen, I'd love to get your thoughts, and, you know, maybe it's just like a happy ending or a positive ending. I think we, you know, I don't know if you guys have ever done this, and I think we all mentioned it, but like, it would be great to sort of have a teacher recognition program, but from the school committee. Like, I mean, I know we do other things and, but we do a lot of things well, and staff work hard, and we need to find a way to formalize it. So just to give thoughts about that, and that's back to Bob, I just think it's time to.
We did, we talked, Michelle and I actually talked significantly about it. We had a couple of plans that we can print forward to your, yeah.
Yeah, it's just my, we really just, obviously, Jen.
Oh, good.
Awesome.
We have, we have a lot of teachers who deserve a lot of.
Exactly. Yeah, it's got to be. Yeah, it's got to be. That's all.
Be in the tomorrow day.
Yeah.
Mary, what's on your mind today?
Um, no, I just wanted to, for everybody, myself, Mary Marsh, and Justin St. John had a great meeting with Kate Oden on Monday. And really laid out the challenges of small school systems and specifically Maynard. I think that she was surprised with some of the things, that some of the challenges that we have going on that are limited partially because of our size, but, you know, the regions around us. But anyway, we, we had a really, really good conversation. So to, soon to be on your work, and it turns out she's going to be in with someone in the department at the state level next week. So she's going to be able to bring some of these things to them. So that was helpful for that. Also, I'm today having a meeting at Education Foundation. The other night, we, I mentioned that we gave a grant to the student government at high school. Oh, they also gave a grant, which I'm really excited about, to, Jen, are you ready? For, to be a pilot for Wilson Learning Training. It's not a lot of money, it was a thousand dollars, which I was surprised to find it was a lot more. She's a first grade teacher, and it's another way to, to help students that are struggling with reading and that, to catch them early. So our goal is to, you know, take the class, to get certified, and also be a teacher, lead teacher. And then, you know, again, if she has success, maybe we can incorporate that in the other, the other grade levels and that.
And we are training, and I don't know if you're aware of this, we have, we have three teachers currently going to Wilson, training to get Wilson certification, and we need all three special education teachers. So that's great that we have the connection. And also the Wilson, if folks aren't aware, is the intervention for our foundation's program that's used for all of our students. So it's a really great connection. So yes, absolutely, thank you, Jen, to y'all for supporting that initiative so that we can have that connection.
And it's going to be really good. So, and the, so two other pieces, the, the, and this kind of plays into earlier with student government. So if we could do something really soon about having like another update or something to show middle school students how great this is. High school, maybe, you know, six, seven, eight, or something.
I know that Kevin Caruso is working on something, so I will reach out. I will reach out and clarify where those plans are. But yes, that is on our radar, those are things that we're doing. I, I will find out where we're at with that.
Okay, good. I'd say no later than March would be great, and it's healthy, whatever.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
But, but yeah, the student government piece is important too, because they're just such great kids. And the last one is the Education Foundation. Again, we've got the sixteen, we're on the street sixteen, sixteenth annual taste, which is our big sushi fundraiser, to allow us to provide grants to people. So it's Sunday, March fourth, from twenty seven, kind of amazing selection of restaurants this year. Every year I say it, but it's really, really good this year. So Jamie and Amy is going to run that. Alona is going to be the entertainment, and we've got amazing raffles and sound options. So for people that like.
Cool.
It's always great, yeah.
Beautiful, Jen.
Be shorter, so. So we've been doing just some follow-up stuff in relation to the conversation we do to have parents of considerations with the district experiences they've had. I have to say, there were also a lot of good things brought up. I think that one of the things that we came out of that with was that there, there weren't any surprises, and there are a lot of good things that we, we are very aware of, of, and of the, what we need to be focusing on, can you mention two? There are a lot of issues already in progress that to be able to address a lot of it. And so part of that's one of the things I want us to be able to mention in relation to the budget is that we have to be back into needing to deal with cuts and how that works and what we do for the cutout process. It, we, attention has to relationship, has to go air, instead of vehicles, work to help the initiatives forward and support the teachers to do that. Not to mention that a lot of initiatives that are in play and a lot of the positions that are in play, like just in general, like they came out as a district. Budget cuts just affect the ability to be able to, to do the differentiation with PBIS, being able to avoid those things. So I just think we can, we can call some of that message more in place to, to your presentations. And that concludes, I want to, aside a sec, I was just copying my dad, this kind of thing is going to be seen probably in Jean Lavelle's, there are two senior that I'm interested in. I don't know who would have copied on what now, but I guess copying different people on different things. But I, Jean, she asked for it. So again, I can, a whole bunch of ideas, because I am an IT girl, and they're having a lot of ideas going around about different things that we can do to highlight positive things going on and, you know, experiences, and kind of, kind of bring those together to try to do different ways that we can market and really showcase what we do. Like, I don't know about the full psychology experience that they do. They're probably just, they're, they're neat and exciting. So, and I know the leading nation initiative will be a great time, and it's going to really help us to push that forward. PBIS, I was wondering, we could do, I was, there was another gentleman that's looking at a larger community wellness initiative. And I'll get to you more about that once I know more about it, but I'm going to call it the Boys' Girls Club, the fire schools.
Really interesting.
Okay. So, and I mentioned PBIS to him, and said, well, the schools ourselves, we have this initiative going on. And once he started reading, it's like, hey, what are you doing? That's awesome. I, I just think it would be really helpful for the community to understand that a little better and what that looks like. Do we have been unpacking for people in the meetings?
We certainly can. I do want to express in terms of, because part, I do want to lend voice to some of our faculty and staff and some of the pressures that they're feeling. We have given presentations on PBIS and collaborative proactive solutions. We did the community read. But as both Carol, Gaya, and I mentioned, these are ongoing, long-term issues. And I just want people to understand, I'm happy to unpack what the entirety of the plans are. But folks need to understand that we need time to get our heads around it. We're not saying we're not doing it, or that we don't believe in it. I need, we, like, we just need to be patient, and I don't want people to say, oh, well, you said you're doing PBIS, but my kid's not coming home with a tiger, as a small silly example. You know, so I'm just happy to do that. But I am hearing that with the best of intentions, I think our faculty and staff are feeling pressure that we should be further along than we are. And I, I emphasize to them that I will continue to be their voice here to say, we will go through this slowly and thoughtfully so that it can work and can stick. So yes, happy to do any of that. I am participating in that meeting next week on Friday, so I can talk further with them about what they would like to do in that capacity as well. And I'm very excited about the community aspect of this. Schools are no longer, you know, little islands. We need wraparound services and wraparound support. Those are some of the challenges for small, we're not rural, but certainly suburban school districts to be able to provide that. So very excited to work with the community in that capacity.
Yeah, you know, as you say, I had a totally resonant stuff with that, I mean, creating as an expectation as opposed to, so I think it's not something that I want to talk really about. Best way, it just seems, and maybe it's more, what are we doing along the way? Do we try to address some of the concerns, and here's a longer range plan?
Yeah.
Maybe the, the, so that it's, because I don't, I'm certainly not trying to put pressure on anyone. But I'm just excited about what I know. And I know I might have had a conversation that it's going to take a little time, and it's just as long as it takes.
Yeah, it's, 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 because, you know, some of the things, it's, I think it'd be great for parents to know that, you know, we're committed to, you know, like, you know, P D I S, and, you know, there's other initiatives as well. But I think we'll have, and I think this is where we can point back on parents as well, you know, as well, and say, yes, but, you know, like any place we've ever worked, you know, rarely do they just change direction and it starts a hundred percent the next day. There's a role of the process. And I think that letting folks know that the choice has been made, the rule of the process has been established, you know, these are, these are some topics that would be great for, you know, this is a meeting, but that can be a big piece of this block. As in, and, you know, and some people sometimes see that and not realize it's some other way. But just let them know, you know, we've committed to this, and there's a process of rolling out, and they'll hear more about it in the future. But, yeah, I don't think, I certainly don't think anyone here is saying do it faster.
No.
More like, help me talk about it. You know, I guess sometimes I get questions that I don't know enough, that we are supposed to hear. You know, we're not supposed to be down, we, we're supposed to do the actual work.
Right.
And we have talked about P D I S, we just haven't had to talk about it in a while, like a while, ninety six months, you know.
Again, happy to provide that brought over. I don't think anyone is saying do it faster. I think it's the best of intentions all around. And this year for PBIS and CPS in particular, well, CPS is a different thing. But for PBIS in particular, this is the year of a rollout for our staff, where our core teams are trying to figure out how to make this work within their settings. So there's, you know, in terms of, oh, let's put the plan out, we're developing the plan currently. And that is a year, possibly a year and a half, or, or approaching the end of year one. We did just provide, or we did just have both of our teams go for the second of three two-day, that's two, two-day trainings. So they're only about two-thirds of the way through sort of the training component of this first year. So I, and I do think that a couple of, they're getting a better sense of what it looks like, how it's structured. And I know, for example, like Remedo, they did a presentation at the staff meeting and did an exit ticket with, with some positive reinforcements. And it's very well received. So, yeah, but I think part of the issue is people, you know, and this came up with the communication task force, well, just tell us what you're doing. Tell us what the plans are. Two things, one, sometimes telling you what we're doing leads to that implicit expectation. Again, not intentional to put pressure, just people are excited by it. But then secondly, in this case, we're not sure how good what it looks like. So we're trying to figure that out. I do think by the end of this year, we will have much more clarity around the specific steps, the steps that parents can expect to see, rather than the general, if you recall the presentation we gave, is, you know, year one is planning, year two is this. So we'll have more of the specifics around what it looks like in May or May, I think, by the end of this year.
So, and that's a great thing. And that's kind of that one.
And I, I show you, when we were having the formal conversation, there were parents that were saying, yeah, there's always something new too, which is exactly what, okay, so even that part, I was like, this, that's why this is being, it's being done very with us, so that, that it can really be part and owned and in a very open space way, and not like, just boom, boom, do it right away.
And then fail, and I was saying.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Well, one of the things the teachers, I think, are expressing too, is that, you know, we have, it's out of the soup, right? We have PBIS, we have CPS, we have responsive classroom. We have nine thousand other things that people have heard of that all fit together. And, you know, for myself, for some of, for Carol, because we are the systems people, we see the puzzle, we see how it fits. We are trying to figure out how we can create a graphic representation, some form of an infographic, to show the interconnection. As much as I know, the tech trend, I'm also not an artist, graphic artist, so we're gonna have to figure out how we do that. But that is something that we've thought about for our teachers and staff members, because it does feel very like, well, who's going to say this is going to work? You did this thing that's now going away. And in fact, most of it's not going away, they're all pieces of the puzzle. So those are some pieces that I think we do need to figure out how we take all of the components and sort of show in a visual way what that looks like. So we are, we are working on that. If we have any people who are creative, info artists, people, I'd love to help, because it's not my thing, I draw boxes. You? Yeah?
No, I'm not. I'm not a visual what.
I have.
Yeah.
So we, we, so that is something that we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, great, thank you. And I appreciate that, bringing out the consideration that happened all that.
Kate Oden and the Boys' Girls Club have been mentioned on several threads during members' comments. I just want to give a friendly reminder to the members of the committee and also the community members that are here tonight that Kate has the Boys' Girls Club as one of her major platforms. And my children have made a wall of dead life at the club after school and through several other programs. So just a friendly reminder, Friday night, March sixteenth, is for the St. Patty's Day fundraiser at the golf course. So they're probably their biggest fundraiser of the year. And then the following morning.
I was just gonna say, so we can talk about the line.
Yeah, then the following day is the twentieth anniversary of being a road race, which is also where we have the Boys' Girls Club. If you want good humor, come down and watch me grow the five K. My wife has been training with a fiend, I want to throw a roll today. So it's gonna, a good time to be at my home.
I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, starts in, the road race starts in about a week. There'll be music, fun. And it's St. Patty's Day, so they get a very good racing, you get started early. So that's all I have. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I?
Oh, yes.
I have one more. Today, and I forgot to put it in the, in the beginning, today we have the bridge celebration, the second of two. I would like to publicly thank the Council of AJ and all of our seniors who are coming in to work with our fourth grade students. I'd like to thank the fourth grade team. It's certainly, you know, the short dollars for those programs, remind them, as I said this morning, it has not short impact. And it is, is, is something that is super important, you know, with the tragedy that you mentioned for Florida. One of the things that we know helps kids in these types of situations is the connection to the community. And it's so cool to see the connection that these kids form. One teacher, Katie Brannega, you know, I thanked her for her organization and time, and she said, yeah, it's not easy, but this is what teaching is about. It's amazing to see, so just wanted to probably address that.
Another thing to be able to pilot.
Yes, I took pictures, I just haven't gotten the Facebook yet.
My daughter, my daughter, and I've just been anticipating in the bridge program. I love the idea of structured activities and ask her to reach out to members of her family to develop further understanding in addition to the community, these connections. I got to, you know, make this a great phone conversation with my daughter and one of my wife's aunts, so her great aunt. And it's absolutely fantastic, the questions that they have to ask, and, you know, it's, it's really, really cool. So kudos to the team for, for doing that. So now I'll try again, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Most, most has been made, it's acted all the favor. Excellent, thank you, thank you.